Mr. Groffredo.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot. Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Zrinsky. All are present, except Mr. Lot and Mr. Brown. Thank you. Next can I have an approval, motion to approve the minutes of February 17, 2022?
Move.
Take a motion.
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Is there courtesy of the floor? I don't have the list, or do I? There's no signups for courtesy of the floor. Is there anybody on the floor that would like to come up and speak?
Millie Bean is here.
You can come.
Sorry about that. The paper wasn't there. Hi, I'm Millie Bean. I've been here a few times before, and I just feel that it's important for me to come and continue to ask about what's going on with the farmland preservation, especially because the county is invested in this program, as well as the townships, you know. I don't know if all townships are, but a lot of them. And because of the fact that the county is heavily invested in this program, if, I feel like I need to come, I want to speak out, because if this is allowed to happen, that they can put sludge on preserved farms, it's really detrimental to this program. Now, we've been meeting, there's a group of us, I just sent out 60 letters to a whole bunch of neighbors, letting them know what's going on, trying to get people to come together. We're going to continue to go to the Nazareth Council meetings and Nazareth Tour Authority meetings and speak how we feel about what they're doing to our community, where we live, this is right out. This is the property where they want to spread sludge, and this is my house, and the house is in front of this property. Besides the community park, besides the Flamefield Farmers Fair, besides the athletic fields for the kids. So it's a really important issue, and I opened up my computer tonight, and I saw this article. Nobody's watching this. Citizens Group rallies against spread of sludge on Toledo's Layton Prairie. Biosolids opponents hold community meeting take issue to Lewis County Commissioners. They want to spread biosolids on the fields. Class A, Class B, I don't care which one it is, they're both bad, and says, that's because the department recently entered into an agreement with Tribeca Transport LLC to allow the company to apply Class B biosolids to 210 acres of agricultural land in Toledo near 145 Layton Road. Now, I just picked this up, I didn't even have a chance to read it all, but I'm thinking to do this to anybody in a community, I don't know, you know, how far they are from other people or whatever, but the whole country, this is a world problem, not just around here. To find better answer what to do with this stuff, and there are, a friend of mine sent me something where they have some kind of a facility that they can, it's called gasification or something, some kind of program, you can take it, and you, I don't know if you burn it or what you do, but I have it on my phone, I'm not going to try to get it now, but I just continue to feel that you folks are on the front lines of a lot of things that happen for the county and for the communities and the people here, and so I appreciate your time again. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to courtesy of the floor? You can come up. You get five minutes.
Oh, she knows me.
Well, everybody gets five minutes. You might get three.
I'm just teasing. This is the second time.
You have to say your name.
Joanne Messalina.
And your address.
Forty Shenick Avenue, Upper Nazareth Township.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This is my second meeting, I was at the Borough, Nazareth Borough Hall, popped in to see what this was all about, because I remembered all the problems in the past with the land farther up in that region. They couldn't be outdoors at all in the summer, couldn't hang wash, couldn't sit on their porches, couldn't have barbecue, nothing. And this is worse now, because this is a bigger adventure, and it would have an impact on everybody eventually in our area. You'd like to say it wouldn't, but the smell will be horrendous. And not only that, it, we filled with so many chemicals, with all the, all the things we are all ingesting, and pooping it out, if you want to put it clear, and that's going to be on all these fields. And I will tell you a story, I won't say who told me. They did this in New Jersey, and one of the men from the company that was pushing this was there, and he said, he saw this jar on the desk up front, and he, the guy got this, the one that was the chairman, and he started to, he says, wait a minute, wait a minute, what's in there? And he said, your sludge. If it's so harmless, we could open this and see how it is. He's, don't open it, don't open it, and he was running out of the room. Just leave you with that thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to courtesy of the floor? Hearing none. County Executive Report.
Good evening, Council. I often refer to, you know, the challenges that we face and attempt to meet in our own little corner of the world. And the purpose of making that point is to acknowledge that while we, you know, are citizens of a broader world, we can only handle our own business. But sometimes the world comes to us, like the pandemic, and then there are things that we have to do. For example, our very successful drive-through and vaccination collaboration with Coordinated Health, LVHN. And tonight, I have here with us Nurse Betty, Betsy, Nurse Betty, come on up.
Nurse Betty, is that?
This is Nurse Betsy Daly, who's a registered nurse. We talked a lot about RN tonight in the previous meeting, but I, I just want, I don't think she wants to work at Gracemore. We'll give her our $1,000 bonus, she'll run right over. Yeah. This is a certificate of appreciation for you. It's the County of Northampton recognizes Betsy Daly, RN, for inoculating the 1,000th patient with COVID-19 vaccine at Northampton County slash LVHN Coordinated Health Testing and Vaccine Site, March 3, 2022, Lamont G. McClure County Executive. You're welcome. But I would not have dragged this very important medical professional here tonight if I didn't think that the story of the 1,000th person who was vaccinated wasn't so compelling. And, and our nurse is going to tell us a little bit about the 1,000th person who was vaccinated.
Thank you very much. I'll admit, first and foremost, I'm not the best public speaker, so I apologize, but I will say, I was on the lookout for this 1,000th person that was going to come to be vaccinated, and when this person came through, she told me her story, and I had no idea at that point that she would be our 1,000th patient, but she told me the story about how she'd been waiting for the vaccine to become available, and just as it became available, she found out she was pregnant, and she opted to wait until after the pregnancy to get the vaccine. Three days after she gave birth, she found out that she was diagnosed with cancer, so she was unable to get the vaccine. So she did finally, after treatment was completed, get the first vaccine, and a few days after that, found out that she had COVID. So she then was hospitalized, and this was her chance finally to become fully vaccinated, and she was very, very thankful that this resource was available to her, so I was so proud to be a part of that as well. So I thank you for your time, and thank you for hearing her story.
Thank you.
Thank you for your commitment to the program.
Thank you for being here, and tell everybody that you're so appreciative of everything you're doing.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, I just, that story was so compelling, I thought that it would be better for her to deliver it than just, you know, have it be part of my presentation. I thank her so much for being here tonight, and I thank you for your continued support of our drive-through clinic. Actually, she's, she's the one who stuck it in my arm when I was in the parking lot, so. I didn't even feel it. I didn't even, we didn't know that until we saw one another tonight. Little corner of the world, right? So COVID comes to our little corner of the world, and we fight back. And now, although we are not directly affected by the war of aggression in the Ukraine launched by an unprovoked invasion of the democratic country of Ukraine, we are affected by it, and I immediately reached out to our pension advisor to determine whether or not we had any funds invested in Russia, specifically in any Russian companies, and I said, we're, we want out. Northampton County in our little corner of the world, what we can do to support the Ukrainians is to get out of our Russian investments, and he said the following. They calculated that approximately 0.07%, or roughly 300,000 of our 428 million in the pension fund, is in Russian companies. In the OPEB, it's the same percentage, 0.07, roughly about $31,000 of 45 million. They, he said, to put this in perspective, Russia represents 0.34% of the world's equity markets, as represented by the MSCI ACWI Index, Morgan Stanley Capital International All Country World Index. So your exposure is about 20% of the Russian exposure in the world, and well below 0.10%, a very small amount. However, they are moving to liquidate our Russian holdings, and they're having a difficult time doing that right now, because the Russian markets are frozen, and until the Russian markets are open again, they won't be able to liquidate, but they are under strict instructions to liquidate our holdings in Russia. Finally, the books have closed, and you're going to be getting your, your financials, and in your financials, you will see that at the close of 2021, we had a $61 million fund balance. Even if you back out eight or so million to pay for the tax cut that we passed at the end of last year, that'll still be a $54 million fund balance, $54 million of our taxpayers' money, than we needed to operate our government, which is the same number, $54 million, that it was the last time the books closed. So today is a demarcation point. We have cut taxes, we have a $54 million fund balance. In the last five years, our employees, who are career service, have received approximately 16.5% in raises. Our union folks, if you aggregate them, are a little more than that, and none of them have had to pay any more for their health care. Also, it's an important demarcation point, because no core services have been diminished, no county core services have been diminished in order to cut these taxes, and we still, when these books close, have a $61 million fund balance. This is extremely solid fiscal and financial management, and it is so important, as we consider our spending going forward into the future, and our potential to return some more of this money to our citizens in the form of real estate property tax cuts, that we continue our fiscal and financial management that has led us to this point. No core county services are underfunded, none have been cut, and we will continue to be able to fully fund our core services. For example, the county executive gets what's called a vacancy report. Someone leaves the job, and a vacancy report is issued, and I get to sign off on it and say, fill immediately, or don't fill, fill at some later date. For four years, in almost every instance, I have signed it and checked, fill immediately. So we are in as good a shape as you can possibly be in, and we must, I caution you, just watch the guard against wasteful spending. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Mr. McClure, Mr. Heckman?
Of course. And thank you to the Nurse I was speaking for, all the efforts. Can you tell us how long, are we, we have an idea of how long we want to continue the test, or the shots?
I think we'll keep the shots and the testing going as long as people will show up.
I just wanted to, I figured that's a good answer, but I just, I don't see a reason to stop it right now.
No, and it's been an excellent partnership and, and really hasn't taxed the budget for it, so we keep a careful eye on that, and it's a great collaboration.
Yeah, somebody asked me, and I said, I don't know, I'll check, because they're thinking of getting a second, a second, I guess a first or a second shot, but they were waiting to see if there were any problems, I said, I think we'd know by now.
We're still open. Now, the, look, hours can change as, as less people are getting tested, but we're still open, and it is my intention to continue to collaborate. Nothing like getting a vaccine in a parking lot.
Mr. Myers.
Mr. McClure. There's a lot of things going on here, and could you give us an update on our COVID numbers, how they're dropping, and how well we're doing?
Sure, well, well, I can, you know, again, little corner of the earth stuff, right? I can only tell you that there are no COVID cases in Northampton County prison amongst either the inmates or our staff, which is just tremendous. There are no COVID cases amongst residents of Gracemore, which is just also really fabulous, and there is one Gracemore employee who's quarantining now. We monitor COVID infections, and they're running about 30 to 35 a day in Northampton County generally. We're still, even under the new guidelines, although, you know, we don't have to wear masks technically anymore, we're still a high transmission county. We're not in that low transmission area. That's how we're doing.
Mr. Cusin.
Thank you for that report. Since you had raised the issue of vacancies, it's my understanding that the Director of Elections has submitted her resignation. I've been asked what the process will be for filling that position. Could you give us an update on that?
Sure, we wish her well in whatever her future endeavors are, but the process will be the same as it is for every career service position. It will be advertised, the resumes and the paperwork that they have to fill out in order to make HR's guidelines will be scored, those people will be interviewed, and then someone will be chosen.
I guess my question is, will the Election Commission play any role or participate?
No, it's, it's our view that that's not their function.
Okay. If I may.
Yes, sir.
I guess it's tied in with that, but I guess I understood the court said, we're still going to do mail-in ballots, so.
Yes.
Everything, despite, you know, what you have to make the change in that, everything is like it was last year election-wise, we shouldn't really, nothing's changed.
Correct.
Okay, and all the suits are passed and.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Almost precisely.
You never know.
There's little changes here and there, but yes.
Okay, all right.
We're good.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward, is there any old business to discuss this evening? Hearing none, we have new business. We have the introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Easton, Pennsylvania to Lease Property Located at the Corner of Main and East Street in the Borough of West Easton, County of Northampton, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania." I need someone to sponsor the ordinance, Mr. Myers. I need a co-sponsor. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the March 17, 2022 meeting. Next, we have the consideration of a request for Controller's Audit Resolution. Ron, would you introduce this resolution, please?
Sure. It would be my.
It would be at the very back of your.
Honor, and I'm privileged that you called on me. In fact, it means a great deal to me, and, okay, so let me start. Do you want me to read the entire thing?
Sure.
Whereas Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 202, powers provide that the county council shall have, among others, the following powers. Eight, to require periodic and special reports from the elected officials and their sub, and their subordinates. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council respectfully request that the Northampton County Controller's Office shall prepare and submit an audit report of the Vision Technologies Incorporated contract for information services to the Northampton County Council, which shall include but not be limited to analysis of the operating costs, including costs for hardware, software, and labor, to determine the efficiency and effectiveness of all contracts, and additional contract modifications or alterations to the contracts. Two comparisons in cost to other third-class counties, and three identification of options that may give the county improved value and/or a cost savings. I guess I'm introducing this.
Thanks. The reason that this is here this evening is, again, we opted to put money aside to do several studies, and given the limited amount of money that we have, and we have three identified areas, we thought that it might be prudent to use the resources that we have to begin an audit with the controller, rather than just hiring an independent person to come in. And I think, Mr. Giovanni, if you want to help me here, because I think we have two requests. One is to review the contract and how, you know, effectively we feel we're being served, but also that there were some needs that we had within this room and this building, and we were talking about getting our own request for proposals. So prior, again, to doing that, we wanted to have a discussion about what we're looking for, what we need, and what we want to make sure is covered, and eliminate what we don't want.
Correct, and what, what I think we're talking about going forward is to evaluate this room for audio and video, and, and this, in the government center here. So we're thinking about, if any questions or concerns that you might have about doing that for visual and audio here. The main point is, when people call in, I think we'd like to see the video of that call in, which can be done. So it all comes down to, it can be done, it's just how much you want to pay for it.
And then how reasonable it is to spend that money, correct?
That is correct.
So if we were going to move forward with an audit, are these the kind of things, and again, you helped draft this resolution, correct? Or no?
No, I did not.
Oh, okay, so this isn't a lean production, and she's not here, but if Mr. Saborski and Mr. Sabino would like to join us in this discussion, because we had a brief discussion at the beginning, and some of the things we may not need to include, but.
Yeah, thank you. We've reviewed the resolution. There's some areas which we can look at, but there's some of the other areas are highly technical, and we're not skilled in those areas. The other thing I would remind you of is, we are currently working year in work with our outside auditors, Mar Dissel, and we're committed to, with that, till probably the middle of April. Tony has a few words, I'll let him say something, but I told him to be brief.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate what Bucky was saying, is that due to government auditing standards, we are not permitted to engage in engagements that are beyond our level of expertise, and IT is a very highly technical area, and we do have some ability to do much of what's on here, and analyzing costs and all of that. When you're talking about efficiencies and cost savings and things like that, it implies a level of expertise that, that our office doesn't possess, and, you know, we put, so what I'm suggesting to you is that maybe what this would merit is a meeting between the parties that are interested in having us do something for you, and talk about what we can do for you. We have the options of doing a performance audit or an agreed-upon procedure engagement. A performance audit would be somewhat more lengthy because of the process for us that we have to go through to do that, so therefore the deliverable to you would be longer. Agreed-upon procedure engagement is probably the best option, and that, but that would mean that we would have to sit and determine the specific individual procedures you want us to do, and we would do those and no more. So that would be something that I think would give you a faster turnaround, and would also be able to have a discussion as to what it is we actually can get for you and do for you, and then we would both agree upon that, and then sign off on that, and, and that would be what we would, would do for you. Similar to what we do with the hotels and, and some other projects that you've seen those reports, as we've submitted them to you. So that is my, my suggestion to you.
Wait, Mr. Giovanni was going to say something.
I would be agreeable to that.
Say that again, please.
I would be agreeable to that, because again, you're not experienced in IT, which can be very long-term kind of thing.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to imagine, because I know over the years, the controllers have done performance audits. At some certain years, numerous ones, depending on who was, who was asking. And so, so you're, at the reading this tonight, and I'm looking into it here, you're saying, yeah, we can do a performance audit on the fulfillment of the contract to a point.
Yes.
Until you get to a very technical situation.
Correct, correct.
Then there, you're, you're just going to have to defer and say.
Those are beyond our level.
We can't tell you whether you, this, this radio or trunk line is the best versus that.
Correct, right.
Thank you.
Technically, when we do performance audits, the word performance is sort of misleading in that it just refers to the type of audit it is, but what normally that entails is us looking at somebody in the county who has custody of county assets, and are they, then do they have the proper internal controls over those assets? Are they handling them well? Are they complying with all government regulations or contract, you know, terms? And that's where we have, that's where we can give you something there, and that kind of thing. So it isn't, when you're talking about performance, it isn't overall performance, it isn't performance as, as are they the best IT function that you could possibly have, you know, that kind of thing.
I understand.
That's not what performance means.
I, I hear what you're saying. I had a few done on me, you know, a council member said.
That's right.
Performance audit, Heckman, so, you know, I, I think I passed, but anyway, I want to ask, Tom, would this then include, you talked about this room, and we were told, like, what, why it can't, would, would part of this then entail, is it possible to set up, if this room is totally unsuitable, and we needed another remote situation, that we would have a room that we could use? Like, we talked about the training room over there, I guess you still call it the training room. As an alternative, would that be part of this, in your eyes?
I don't know if it'd be part of this, I think we might want to do that kind of separately.
Okay, because I mean, I. When we had the one discussion, it was said that it's, and you're, I, I have no problem in doing it. I, there were certain things that we were told can't be done. For example, we can't do it in this room. So I don't have somebody come in and say, well, this is our opinion, if you do X, Y, or Z, but depending on the cost or what we're told, then you would say we would do something, we'd have to, we should do a different study then to find out, well, could it be done in a different room? Remember when we had this discussion about?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and if this room is totally unsuitable.
Right.
But something happened, let, let's say, God forbid, there's another strain of this, and, and we all have to, like, do the whole thing we did online. If it can't be done here, is there like an emergency area we could go to where it's set up where we could in fact do it then? You know, like a, just a room across the hall?
I, correct. I think we should do this room and then have an option, if this room cannot be done, or what about the.
Okay, yeah, and I mean, I leave that up to you, but I just was curious. Thank you.
So, back to the resolution, are there any other thoughts? Do we need to amend it? Do I need to table it and rewrite it? Because I can table it and rewrite it, or, you know, if we do pass it, then we can meet with the auditors to define, again, very specifically, and you can send in what we want to look at and what we don't. So it's included but not limited to. So if we want to eliminate something, do we give the auditors permission to do so based on their expertise? Yes, no, maybe?
Well, like, what I think is, this resolution's fine to audit Vision Technologies and what they're, what they're doing, just for our perspective, if that's what we're looking at, but as far as these rooms here, I think they would be a separate, as they all by itself.
Right, and that's not, that's not on.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't amend that to, to do that on this.
I, I agree with that. I mean, I, I don't see any reason, if you want to pass this, because I think then we're going to have, there's going to be communication anyway. I think on various audits that were called for, there would be communication to fine-tune what exactly we're asking for, so.
From our point of view, we would issue, if we did an agreed-upon procedure engagement, what we would do is come up with a formal letter from our office.
Yeah.
That would be signed by both parties, which could be accepted by this body as a resolution subsequently, so you can do that as well. That, that's, I think, a good option.
And as far as, I just go back to you, Chairman.
And as far as, I just got to you, Chairman. Our IT company goes through audits all the time. When we're our long-term clients, they'll come in, say, we want to audit classes, performance and stuff like that, and what they're paying for, what they're receiving. So it's normal in IT to do that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zrinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, and then we'll?
Yeah, feel free to call us.
Have a team meet with you to refine.
And even though, like I said, even though we're working with the external auditors, we certainly are available for a meeting to hammer this out as to what we will do anytime. So call Bucky or at any time, and we'll schedule a meeting at your leisure.
Okay, thank you very much.
We look forward to working with you as usual.
Okay, are there any county council committee reports?
I had a human service committee meeting, which you started. I appreciate that, thank you. And we covered everything. You were here, everybody, so the fruits of which were covered. And we had a good discussion on Greysdale and Iris, and the director gave us a report. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Cusick?
Yeah, I have a request. I'm disappointed Mr. Barron just walked out. If he's still there, could you grab Steve Barron for a minute there?
Paging Steve Barron, paging Steve Barron.
Sounds like shop right.
Yeah, one of our core responsibilities, Mr. Heckman and I go back and forth in this, is conduct of elections. Now, you all recall that earlier or later last year, we redistricted county council. One of the things that we investigated 10 years ago were the districts for our municipalities and school districts because some of them don't have the GIS capabilities that we do in order to analyze. I believe some of our boroughs are by district, and some of our school districts also redistrict by districts. So what we did 10 years ago is through the GIS department, we provided our municipalities and school districts that have individual districts with census data that we, was provided. Was Jason, did he do that work?
So Joe Lakey did some of that. We just gave them the numbers. At that time, the only district that was sort of, had a huge disparagey were the districts in the Eastern Area School District, and primarily because they had that little sliver at the time that went into Bucks County. So Easton was a school district that actually had part of, a very small portion of Bucks County in it. And it's the Greater Eastern Area School District because it also gets some of Lower Mount Bethel as well. So that was sort of, their districts sort of were askew because of the population shift in the county. That's what happened in that situation.
Yeah, so I guess my request is, is that something that GIS can still provide us? And then we could subsequently provide it to our boroughs and school districts that still have by-district elections?
That is, yeah, we, the data exists. We can pull that if needs be. And if the municipalities would like to do that redistricting, our, that department can assist in it very easily.
Okay, because I think it was helpful because it was, it was brought, when we did it 10 years ago, it was brought to council. I don't know if it was, who did the work?
So, so GI, Joe did the work. The school, Eastern Area School District at the time realized they were going to have these disparages, like these issues. They had asked the, it wasn't the superintendent of the district. Mr. Myers, do you, did you guys have a clerk for the school district, for the school board?
Yes.
Okay, it was the clerk of the school board at the time. And I don't know if it was your initiative, Mr. Myers. I, I'm going way back, and I apologize.
Ten years ago.
Yeah, so, but their clerk had reached out. And then at that point, we pulled for all the districts and sent them out at council suggestion.
Because I have a suspicion that there's one school district where there's a need for redistricting. And I'd like to see the data and the maps if that were possible. If we could do that at a governance committee meeting, I think that would be really good.
I will pull that data.
I'd love to see it. Thank you.
Did I ask if there's any new business? Did I skip that? Okay. Agent stage, people, agent stage. I, there will be a governance committee meeting on the 17th, I believe, at 3:30 in the afternoon. Any other council committee reports?
There will be a question corrections on the 16th.
And that will follow the finance committee, correct?
Correct.
Any council liaison reports? Sarah Zrinsky.
I'll be brief. Farmland Preservation was on Tuesday. There are 17,949 acres preserved on 227 farms. The Airport Board did meet. They are doing very well in this, despite COVID. They are hiring, and they are having a career fair. I would look on their website because they have several different fairs and job openings currently. They are also working diligently. They're on day 231 out of 730 on the Terminal Connector Project. The Lehigh Valley Planning Commission did meet. And the significant piece was the property that Nazareth Borough Waste Authority had previously owned that they're building a warehouse on. Cynthia Carmen Kramer, the manager, township manager of Palmer, was present at the meeting. And I did bring up that they should do an environmental impact study and also a soil sample study due to the fact that sludge had previously been spread on that property. We want to make sure workers who are either in the construction process or workers who have to be there are protected. Cynthia Carmen Kramer did say that that was something they had intended to do. Also, this past year, LVPC approved 307 units. And the Lehigh Valley has a shortage of 14,480 housing units priced for households below $25,000. And that really prices a lot of people out. So Lehigh Valley Planning Commission is currently discussing how we can help people with housing needs, affordable and attainable housing. In addition to that, there was a Wildlands Conservancy meeting. And the, the part of the meeting that was significant for Northampton County is a Williams Township property, Fry's Run. The resolution was approved to preserve, this is a restore, restoration project to restore a degraded stretch of stream along Fry's Run. And that will address that crossing and flooding in that area. And they received a DCNR and a Wildlands match of $200,000 for that. So that's what they're doing in Northampton County.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Mr. Heckman?
Sorry, I was part of a Greysdale Advisory Board meeting yesterday morning. Fair amount of what we went over, we talked about today, so I won't really go back over that. Just discussing possibilities and some of the concerns and the numbers that we heard. The big thing I thought that was brought up, and we talked a bit about, was something that had been mentioned before. We didn't hear it tonight, I think, but the daycare. I think that's still being looked into, and hopefully it's going, I think the plan is to implement it. It's just now working out the details. And I think that we all thought that if we're talking about doing some different things that might appeal to workers, it certainly makes sense. So, I mean, I don't know, I don't think we don't know exactly how close we are. But we're, it's proceeding, it's proceeding. And everything else we touched on. So I just wanted to bring that, I wanted to highlight that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, we had Information Technology Governance Meeting. It was virtual. Nothing new in the policy clarity. Eileen was out this week, so they were going to try and test it. So they're going to wait until she gets back. Things are, they're receiving hardware now pretty constant, so things are moving along on a refresh. They put the wireless at Greysdale. Is in process to survey for that. And there's going to be some other updates and other things going on with software. But that's my report.
Thank you. And Mr. Giovanni and I both attended the Mental Health Early Intervention Developmental Disabilities Meeting. There was a lot discussed, but that's where we heard about the My Ascension Project. So that's why it was familiar to us in tonight's meeting. There was a lot discussed, I can't think.
They gave us the locations of the two places. One in Easton on North Hampton Street, one in Bethel on North Street. They have walk-ins for mental health.
Right. I had asked about homelessness and what services, adult services were available in the county, and Kathy Cromer gave a report on that. I mean, they sound like they're just in great shape, and they're busy, and they're doing what they need to do. Early intervention is continuing to get so many child mental health referrals. It's, and it sounds like they just can't keep up with the numbers. So it's, it's a sad problem, I think, because we're talking, I think she highlighted under five referrals, under age five, so, you know. To be continued. It's a quarterly meeting. Yes, sir?
Housing Authority met. The divorce process from Lehigh County continues. I believe it's moving along smoothly, and I would just applaud the leadership of Becky Bartlett. I think she's really taken the bull by the horns, and that is moving forward because of her leadership.
Thank you. May, right?
Yeah, it's on, it's ongoing. But there's other things that are involved. And DCED is doing, Mr. Brooks is working as part of the process as well, so.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Council Clerk report?
No.
Where's that? Where is she?
I didn't see her. She's over there.
It's like, why did Linda's voice come out of Jen? Council Solicitor report?
Nothing.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Tom, Harry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.